At seven P M. All three selectmen are present. The town administrator is present. Leo Martell is recording for the benefit of the public. You'll be on the Dunbar- new Dunbar website and YouTube. And London Nickerson uploads that for the panel. Okay, a bit more business here with previous meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of July, June twenty fourth. At seven P M. As amended.
Second.
Motion made a second?
Any discussion?
No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a second motion to approve the non-public minutes of June twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Motion made to have a second.
Second is, I'll say as written.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Motion made and amended?
No, amended, no, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, Mike?
Okay, I'm gonna go back for public comment. Leo, you have anything?
Yeah, Leo Martell. I just wanted to say that new website that Tom has is different. I guess it's gonna take a while to get used to, that's all, you know?
Yeah.
It is different. I played around with it a couple of times and I guess I'm so used to the old one that, you know?
Right.
I mean, it looks nice, there's no doubt about that. I'm just not familiar with it right away, you know?
We're learning as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Will it be, like, changing as it goes or is that the format, the whole thing?
The ultimate goal is to have all the departments that are involved with the town to have access to their own section of the website so they can upload notices, news, other things, and...
I noticed it was pretty interesting because you had a lot of the town organizations listed there and I was able to click on and see about them and everything. It was interesting, you know?
Pretty user-friendly?
Yeah, well, like I said, I gotta get used to it, you know, it's what it is.
It's very pleasing to the eye, so...
Yeah, it's very soft and everything, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if you have any recommendations, I mean, now is the time because we did pay quite a bit of money to have that set up to make it more user-friendly.
Oh, so far, I don't...
Yeah, we're gonna put every organization that's involved and appointed by the town in there. And as we continue to add things in there, that's when they will show up. So originally, we were missing a couple of the committees that don't meet, like Town Forest, in there, but as soon as we put minutes in there, it created an account for them, basically, and so this is gonna be...
What about, say, for example, the lake hosts?
Well, that's a state organization, though it's not a town organization, but we, I could do a page if you don't mind.
My point is it makes the people aware of what's going on at the pond.
Right, I could do that, I could build your page, I don't know what master.
No, no, you would build a page, you'd just have access to a page.
Access, oh, okay.
My point is that I could set him up with a user for the milfoil, because he's a milfoil committee. And then within that tab, you can put a subtitle of lake host information that's from the state.
Alright, it'd be something like that, I'm sure.
Well, not just that, you could post your current information about ponds.
Great, what I have right here, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great, I think, to have that.
Sure, yeah, that'd be something, yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Okay, we'll move it right along now that we're out. You're all set, Leo, any other comment? Definitely moving on to public comment, we'll go right into town business and Bob Runner. We're here for the lake host updates on milfoil.
Okay, two separate animals, we'll start with the milfoil first. The good news is there is still no milfoil in any ponds in Dunbar. I got a report from Amy from D E S. She was down doing her own check about two weeks ago. We also have a couple of volunteers, Lois Reynolds and Peter Brunn. They live at, I think, they're down at fourteen Holiday Shore. They go around with all their kayaks. If anybody has access to Facebook, you'll look at the Dunbar Community Page. They've actually adopted, and I've adopted Peter's picture, of a giant snapping turtle. It finally, I think it was on Kimble Pond or sitting on top of a log, but they go to all the ponds and check them all out. No milfoil whatsoever, so we're doing really well on that.
That's great news.
Yeah, yeah, it is. I think we're still piggybacking off of the proselytizer treatment that we had over twenty-five years ago, so we're hoping we're doing okay to help maintain that. That's where the lake hosts come in. We started, just to give you an update, last year we didn't have lake hosting due to COVID. I was assured by the town, by the state Lake Coast Coordinator, Crystal Favanoff, that there wouldn't be any penalties to us. Penalties meaning they give us money to pay a lake host. Normally, it's eleven dollars an hour, and normally we get about sixteen hundred dollars. So when I went to file the paperwork this year between myself and Lean, I get notified back, "Oh, well, we're treating you like you're a new lake host community instead of getting sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars. You didn't have the activity last year, you didn't have any volunteers, you didn't have any boats checked in, you didn't have any travel time." All the metrics that they use to add up to a number, so they've only given us a thousand dollars. I'm like, "Well, holy crap, I can only, I can hire somebody for like five weeks, and that's just weekends." We cover the, we cover the state home ramp on Saturdays and Sundays usually. And for eleven dollars an hour, they were giving me five weeks. So long story short, we got the word out to people. We tried to hire somebody, we dealt with, Mike, your suggestion was to go to the schools. He said something over the air. Turns out, we ended up hiring this kid Glenn Vodra, who's the son of the pastor across the street at the church. Lives over in Pembroke. And we had to pay him thirteen dollars an hour, which we needed to get more money. So myself, my wife, and a few other locals got together and we made our own donations. And we brought that thousand dollars up to fifteen hundred and forty-one dollars, fifteen hundred and forty dollars. And that'll get us, he started two weeks ago, and he'll go through August the seventh. And then we'll get our volunteers back in. We've got, right now, we've got ten volunteers that go, I can hand this on to you guys. Just three pages and I will be quick. The first page is, on the left, is the list of the volunteers. What they wanna know, their volunteer hours that we spend down there. Then it says total hours cash equivalent, that's multiplied by twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents. That's what National Lakes values the volunteers at. And then the mileage is anything that, we usually, like, for the folks that are down on the pond, it's called a mile each way, but folks, if you look, Blue Deberio is on there. And he's got quite a few miles, because he's coming, we get credit for him coming up from Tootsbury. And also George Skiel, who used to be on the board, he's down at Old Fort, so he gets a few miles too. So that all adds up, that bottom number on the right-hand side, fifteen hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-three cents. They don't have dollars, cents, they have, that's what it points to. And so we get credit for that as a town. If you turn to the next page, these are the folks that donated, well, these are the donations that we got in. We got four hundred dollar donation, five hundred dollar donations, and one forty dollar donation. And if anybody's interested in donating, the last page, when you go to nationallakes.org, you'll see the box that says red, and it says click here to donate. And just below that on the same page, you get the Lake Coast Charitable Giving Donation Form. It's tax deductible. You put in town of Dunbar, and you have to select a lake host group, that's us, town of Dunbar. And then put your name in, and they'll take your credit card, or you can mail them in a check. My wife mailed in a check, I did my credit card, and they give us credit for that, so. It's a good program, and Glenn's doing a great job. And the good part is, I'm the data entry person for this too, which, up until we got Glenn on board, we started the end of, we started Memorial Day to do the monitoring of the boats in and out of the pond. And then I would get the sheets at the end of the weekend. They've got the worst data entry, oh my God, Lean, you'd go crazy. You've gotta select the town of Dunbar, you've gotta put in the lake host first, initial and last name. And then you've gotta go through in what kind of a boat was it, or is it all the metrics that they have. And you have to keep doing it over and over again. Well, Glenn's a techy, he's gonna be going to, I think, R I T, and he downloaded the app. So he sits here, checks the volume on the app. When he gets home, uploads everything, gets into my inbox and everything, so. So I don't have to do any data entry, so I'm gonna try to train the rest of the volunteers to use the app. And they'll make data entry work easier.
These numbers will serve as a basis for the state for next year?
For next year, these numbers will go towards, to our credit for next year. So I'm expecting fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars, we won't need anybody. Now, let's say Glenn goes a week early, we've got a hundred fifty bucks left in there, it stays there. That'll still be sitting there when we apply next year in March, and we'll still have some money. That's totally separate, they don't touch it, and it just goes towards paying for the lake host. So maybe we can get started a little earlier. If I had thought about it better, I was talking to Mike today and Donna, I said, you know, if I had thought about it last weekend, instead of having him work Saturday in the rain when she had zero boats, I should have tried to ask if he could switch to Sunday and Monday. We did have a lot of boats on Monday, but we're still getting pretty good metrics. A lot of people are using that plot right now, so.
I think a lot of people use Lovebird ponds. I've been driven by Kimble Pond on the weekend, and I just cannot believe the amount of ice down there.
Yes, I know.
Kimble Pond had an article in the, in a Boston paper. And Jim, you walk around Kimble Pond, and what the town did to buy that area years ago? And so it was a very upbeat article about how nice it is at Kimble Pond. About a few cars there, they're over here, maybe done anymore.
And one other piece, this is totally separate from this. The Lake Water Association doesn't have anything to do with the lake hosting or the milfoil. But we test the water in our beach every year. Eighty-eight parts or less is a good number, came back at one. So the pond, you know, is really good. So a couple of years ago, I think we had to close it for a high bacteria count, so it's one. So we're doing really good on that, so. Good report on the ponds, and a lot of people putting in some time to...
Keep it that way.
Yeah, yeah, we are.
Awesome.
Nothing but good news.
Well, thanks, the good news is great. No, I appreciate all your work on that.
Oh, sure.
They take somebody to handle it, and now you're doing a great job doing it.
Oh, thank you.
And is a state, one last, is a state council happy with, because we were one of the pilot projects with that new formulation?
Yeah.
Are they happy with the results? I, I think we should be ecstatic, they should be ecstatic with the results.
I've had that argument with them, because, I mean, you talked to me, well, you and I talked to you when we first, this, this year coming in, I was very, very frustrated. Couldn't get anybody, you know, companies are hiring, and they're giving a thousand dollar bonuses or two thousand dollar bonuses, and no kid wants to commit here for eleven dollars an hour. Couldn't get anybody, wasn't getting much response.
How old do the kids have to be?
They have to be, they'd like them to be eighteen, they'll take seventeen in a pinch, sixty is a stretch. Anything less than eighteen, you're gonna get the parents to sign. I brought Glenn in here and interviewed him, but he was kind of a no-brainer. He's a very good kid, very tech-oriented and stuff, and he just graduated, so he's, he's good. But it was very frustrating this year because I kinda gave the state a piece of my mind. I said, "You know, Dunbar's, name another town that's gotten rid of milfoil. We're it, we are it." And I said, "So we've done due diligence, we've ponied up our tax money." And I said, "I don't hear a peep out of you guys." "Well, you're gonna write something up." And why should I have to write something? We're doing your work. You write us up and say, "We'd like to recognize Dunbar as," you know?
People's a child.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, you know, so.
No, it's not only the chemicals, but it's the diligence of the residents in the area.
Residents in the area, keep an eye on things, that's everything, you know, it's like...
Right.
So we've, I told Crystal I was pretty close to quitting, and she begged me not to. And I said, "Well, then give us a hand here, you were the one that told me last year" that she's the coordinator for lake hosting. I said, "You were the one told me last year, no problem." "That's a problem, thousand dollars, it's a drop in the bucket." But like I say, fortunately, once I told people like Eaton, Lois, myself, my wife, and a few other people, quickly, you know, threw some money in, so that, that money is ours to stay. And like I said, Glenn will be there until August seventh. And I have a signup genius that I send out as a reminder to people. Signup genius is great if you haven't used it, because if you sign up for something, you could, I set up a reminder that two days before, if you're gonna volunteer Saturday, Thursday, you get an email, "Hey, don't forget you signed up from eight thirty to ten thirty at the pool rate." And that's kind of the thing. And then I also have the metric, because I can keep track of everybody's hours right on there, so I know exactly how many volunteer hours everybody has, so it's, it's real easy. And I told them already, we'll start up again on the weekend of the thirteenth and fourteenth of August. And we'll probably go to about the third week in September, and after that, it kind of keeps off, you know, there's not really much.
Nobody told you how it works in Dunbar? You can't resign?
I've heard that, that's, that's been, that's been in the weeds since, you know? Why don't you volunteer, look out, you're, you're sunk.
Especially when you're doing a good job.
Yeah, yeah, well, hey, it, it's worth it, you know? Like I said, when we first came here in 'oh four, we put a boat in water and we'd go fifty to seventy feet, and we'd have to clear the prop. It was fifty-five percent included in two thousand and four. And now we got zero.
And no fish?
No, I'm actually off the record, I'm working on, I'm working on that. I gotta contact a fishing game, and I wanted to...
Stop.
Stop, thirty, thirty, thirty to fifty fish, that's all. Just something to get us through the, you know?
They only raise trout.
I thought they raised other stuff too?
No, they don't raise one more species that I know of.
No?
There's trout, rainbow trout, trout.
Yeah, I don't want, we don't want trout in here.
Yeah. I don't think you'll find it from the...
You know, it's a funny thing, it's, we have a couple of places in town that come to going pond to take water up. There's no restriction on that, but there's a restriction on what you can put in. So, you know, we're limited. I thought they did other species too.
That's what I've heard, but I've seen a lot of hatcheries, and I've never seen any.
You've never seen them? Yeah. When I was working over in Merrimack, I had a man-made pond, and I went to a place and bought, you know, thirty koi, you know, that type.
Yeah. I know in Merrimack, they have some other types of fish there, but I don't think they're, they're state-raised fish.
Yeah, I don't think so either. I was hoping, you know?
Small and smalls.
Yeah. Because I've heard that from people, they're taking small, the bass, Alan Pond, they have, they have taken pickled, they're taking perch, sunfish, you know, going crazy, that type of thing. But, and then we do have a lot of water snakes this year, I've seen, probably have a dozen brown water snakes. The adults are like three feet, and the babies are a foot and a half, a hundred and fifty.
That'd keep me out of the water.
Well, they don't, they don't bite, give or free to you, then.
Yeah, yeah.
As a matter of fact, I have a small, little floating dock, it's a raft, but I'm using it like a dock. It had moved into the shore, so I got out with a cubicle for it, I'm just using it as a lever to get it out there. A sudden snake comes out, he's a little physical. When I pinned him in the back of his head, he's like, "Okay, I'll go back." He can't even back.
You know, the maybe is the two crappy ends of the places, because you didn't catch them in clubs before. You didn't catch them in...
Kimbles?
You didn't catch them over at Purgatory Pond. I'd seen some guys over at clubs this week, and they had caught crappy over at Purgatory Pond.
Really?
So I think they're getting into a lot of different ponds.
I don't know.
I don't think it's just birds, you know?
Yeah. No, no, I don't think so, but...
I don't think there's probably some individuals doing stuff, but...
Well, years ago, I said to somebody, before I knew what I know now, I did see people taking like six-inch old littletines and stuff to the limits too, so I mean, come on. That, that had something to do with, you know, limiting what's available in the pond. So you fish it out, and then you're complaining that there's no fish. And again, fishermen point at saying, you know, it's, it's the treatments, and it's not the treatments. It's the fact that people aren't fishing properly, are finding dead fish on the shore, you know, are finding people over the limit. You know, the lake hosting, we can't do much other than to just identify. They want a metric, they wanna know whoever you last, where you're gonna go when you leave. So if you just arrived, whoever you last time, we were over in Boston, or, you know, where are you gonna go next week? We're gonna go to Lake Nessau, but where are we gonna go where? They just want a metric, and they don't have the lake hosts do any enforcing of anything. They check your sticker, if you're on the state now, they want a twenty dollar on the state, the E C L, one there for, say, Massachusetts. They have a new thing called a, a week. Is that a week? Actually, I don't have it with me. It's a, a way to keep your lull in the water on some of the inboard waters and stuff. They just want to see what people have up there, so. And then they clean and drain you. We have to find the species specimen down there, everything electronic now, they give, we have a package that Glenn has that if you find something that looks like milfoil, we lay it out on a laminated piece of paper that gives the length, and they take a picture, and we just email it in, so we used to pay and send it in to them and stuff, they don't even do that anymore. They're pretty good with keeping track of all the hours and everything. When I hired Glenn and the time to come here and Dr. Coke, to get us big work in and stuff like that, that's part of my numbers, you know, in there and stuff, so they're at least giving us the credit. So next year, I'm looking for between sixteen and eighty hundred dollars maybe. Okay, so that'll be just for paying the lake host. And will we pay the lake host unless we have to give up our weekends, you know, two hours at a time to recover? It's usually eight thirty to four thirty that we cover. Glenn has a little bit of earlier hours due to another friend, everybody's like seven thirty to eleven thirty, takes a half hour off for lunch at nine twelve to four. So, any questions I can answer for you guys? Was that brief enough?
Nope. Just give me that. Kudos.
Okay, thanks, thanks for your support too. Appreciate it. I'll get out and get it.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Lean.
I'm gonna do some appointment paperwork here. Go a little bit out of order, take care of this. Make a motion to appoint Tom J. Cassano. Where's the vacancy on the Dunbar Home Days Committee instead of town? And will us, please, subscribers have the confidence in your ability, integrity, performance, and set up. We do hereby appoint, we do hereby appoint Thomas J. Cassano. He remembers the Dunbar Home Day Committee instead of town of Dunbar. March twenty twenty-second is his term ending. Does the motion, do I have a second?
Second, yeah.
Okay, motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the next item. We'll start off with our, to review our quarterly expenses and revenues. Let's start with the revenues and fun stuff. Starting with land use changes. Current year, we're up substantially, just above our budget of fifteen thousand. Not perfect there so far.
Yeah.
U N tax?
Still early in the year, so...
Comes in at the end, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that looks like, uh, paying the lower taxes, that's fine. Let's get to the big stuff. How are we doing here? Interest on taxes is up, Lean. Current year budget, we're at, overall, like sixty-one percent, that's not too bad. Double sided when you flip. Okay, let's see how Linda's doing, three hundred eighty-three and a six, seventy-five for our budget. That seems to be pretty good for Jim.
Yeah, January third, June, so she's over on her fifty percent mark.
Yeah, so she's at forty-three percent left, so that's good. Gonna buy those new cars. Building, building code departments to say, you're on forty-two, forty-three percent. And the same thing with dog licenses, marriage licenses, all this normal stuff, those departments. They're at forty-two percent. Federal government?
Well, that won't come in until October and December.
You did get one check on the highway block grant, huh?
Yeah, I'm actually behind schedule for the second one.
So we're at fifty-five percent, so that's good. Flood control, that won't come till the end, right?
Yeah.
Rooms and meals are same. And grant revenue?
That's the milfoil that we put on warrant.
Okay.
You won't, you get that unless we need any treatment from milfoil.
So because some of those are government funds, it's gonna be off until the end?
Yeah.
Recycling income is right online?
Oh, they're, they're, I think they're above.
Way above, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's a paper with a big Houston money this year. I see you may not have to charge us per bag.
Category only being sixteen percent for the, to make our goal at the end of the year. It's been well there.
One thing. It seems down to fifteen percent of that.
The record is the opposite of the expenses, the number on the end is what is left, percent left. So there's like sixteen percent on the left, out of fifty thousand, we collect it almost twenty-two.
So we're at fifty-three percent overall when we look at the budget, so...
Yeah.
That's not too bad for this time of year.
Not at all.
Especially where a lot of this stuff comes in later in the year, so. That takes care of the ruble as well, it's looking at the expenses. And we're looking forward to selecting the town administrator, that's fifty-four percent, town offices.
The Secretary of Town Office, I just wanna point out that the sixty, this says sixty percent, but I actually have fifty-five hundred earmarks for the reconciliation. So if I take that out, it brings us down to the fifty-one percent. So I probably will be running over on that line just based on the contract that I have and the scheduling that I have with the two office staff individuals.
Okay, town clerk and, town clerks, and rooms and meal and that, that's at fifty-one, so that's halfway, that's good. Financial administration is at sixty-four point two-six. Assessing department, is that sixty percent?
At ten thousand earmarks on contract.
Yeah. Legal, we're already at eighty-three percent. I know that there has been a couple of high legal things on the planning.
We have a few this month that aren't seen, it's about, I see that half a way.
Okay. Personnel administration, fifty-two percent, that's good. Planning is at forty-nine. Interior rooms at seventy percent. Property liability insurance to sixty-two, police departments at fifty-two. So I'm looking at mostly departments trying to be somewhere around between fifty and sixty percent at this point in the year, most of them are. Highway departments at seventy percent. Transfer stations at sixty-one. Welfare's at eighty. And some of the smaller departments haven't spent any of the money yet. Okay, lots of good updates, Ron's lean. We can hardly even kind of watch and see how it works out, but I appreciate you giving them to us so we can keep an eye on them. Okay. Moving on to you, Jim, I see some people around here. Jim, why don't you come up to the front here? This is my retirement salary, right? Not quite yet, we don't let you go that easy in Dunbar. You heard something about six more years. Joe, we have your fellow officers here. They wanna give you this plaque from the town of Dunbar. It's a recognition and appreciation plaque from the town of Dunbar. For your years as an officer, the Dunbar Police offers, honors thirty years of service with the town of Dunbar. A badge three-eleven. Appreciate your service, we're not gonna let you go, so you have to stick here. Why don't we get a picture with us? What are the best ways we'll come up to the front here? Just to waste up on this guy, please.
Not the more.
My camera hasn't worked that well.
Yeah, just put my there copy, yeah.
That's all I want. Thank you, guys. How about with your, with your crew, would you guys like to get in there?
Yeah, sure.
One more.
Oh, hold on, Mike, we gotta, another one for Pam? Same smile, guys.
I had it on video, I accidentally.
She should actually get a plaque for putting up with me.
Yeah.
I want you.
And then after that, I'd like to, to arrest the officers in here with Joe with that plaque here too, if we can. Get you up on our new website.
Ooh, nice.
That's what it's like.
Is it?
Oh, no, we didn't.
Awesome.
Thanks. Worse than my wedding.
No guns, there's more guns here, right? I mean, you wanna use Princess, follow me, give a picture.
You got my phone. It's over here on your coat. Men in black.
You wanna help send these in here, so you put them on the website?
Okay.
Okay. Joe, it's understanding, only one house too long here so far?
Yeah, so far.
All right. I'll do that with forty years with you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
No. I started when I was first.
Thank you all for coming down, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Joe, thanks again for years of service.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we're going to our mailbox items here. Okay. We have an update here from our welfare department. Um, this is our, once a year, right lean, our update showing us, uh, the activity within the department.
She's supposed to do it monthly, she tries to do it monthly, which is very helpful.
I know the girl before her, we had a hard time getting it once a year.
Yes, that's correct, yes.
If we got it once a year. So this is just a nice update to tell us what she has been doing, uh, throughout these times since her last one. Very helpful. Okay, I've got a transfer station update here as well. Uh, he's stating in here that this possibly could have some employees leaving the transfer station. Guess we'll wait to see how that happens. Transfer station, um, manager there, Woody Bone, will be on vacation from August thirteenth through the twenty-third. Um, regarding COVID, he asked if it was okay to stop taking temperatures, start helping residents unload with their trash. I guess we'll discuss that as a board. Do I do it now, or maybe? Yeah, why don't we take a minute and do that now?
Thing is, I'm, I'm a car lady, a lot of people have been asking about the swap shop too.
Right.
And so, you know, that's a, a lot of the residents appreciate the fact that you recycle good stuff and give it to needy families, uh, who want it, put stuff there. And there is, uh, some people who view it in the sense that, right, you're gonna sneak away without having to pay a fee.
Right.
I think the benefits outweigh the, uh, um.
There has been a lot of talk about opening that, I know that, uh, Woody was, Woody was, uh, was asking last time not to open it, but, um, he's, it's been quite a while now since we discussed it, so. I would think that, uh, it's time, I guess, if Woody feels he could open it up and have an active unfiling, if yours are.
I don't have a problem with that.
And if he thinks it's gonna be a burden if he wants to wait till after his vacation, I don't have a problem with that either, so. I guess a lot of people feel, um, yeah, give him the latitude to do it on his own. Um, I think it is time we could stop taking temperatures now, we're way down below. In our state, I just looked at the new totals today, we have, I think, uh, only eleven new cases for the whole entire state. It's, uh, it's very low at this point, I think we're safe to do that. And I think it's okay to help, uh, residents unload their trash again, myself, I don't know if you guys thought.
I think that sign should be taken down.
Yeah. Okay. Can we let Woody know those updates by email? And let him know the swap shop can be done at his discretion. Depending on employees leaving and or his vacation, if he wants to.
Yeah.
Hold off, he can. He was asking about the road bond, I think that's still, uh, a possibility this year, but it's, uh, it's again, we're waiting for the road agent to come back to us with a, a budget process to include that.
Which one, what is that again?
He asked about the road bond, if it was a possibility this year.
Not this year, next year, it's whatever.
But for which department, the highway?
No, the highway department, the road.
He's just requiring personally.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Well, I think it might affect the decision he made in his department, but I.
You may wanna talk to Jeff, but you know, uh, all in all, Jeff is gonna be concentrated on doing the roads. That could be an item that's taken up under maintenance through Jeff's department, so he has a little more control of doing it when it's, you know, price of oil is going up. The price of asphalt's gonna go up. So, I mean, Jeff, Jeff should be able to make that decision.
On the bonding or not?
Well, the bonding should, uh, I'd like to see it specific to the road and not include that. And let that come under a, a maintenance item that has to do with the highway.
I'm not understanding what you're going on. What he's talking about is a bond to pay for the expenses to fix the roads.
I understand that, but he wants to know if they include the transfer station.
Oh, I didn't read that.
I think he should be having that conversation with Jeff. So that if Jeff's applying for the bond on the road and he feels he can do that in the future as a maintenance item. You follow me? Cause they're going through there and the road, it isn't that bad.
No, he wants to concentrate on, pretty sure, just the roads, yeah.
So, I mean, that's, that's the conversation he should be having with Jeff, so if Jeff, if Jeff thinks it's feasible and he comes to us. I guess that's probably the way we're gonna go, but if Jeff comes to us, says he could do that at another time.
Okay, and the other thing is, uh, I agree with you, Bob, I think that that should stay with just the roads. And, uh, be done under regular maintenance. Um, and the other thing he's asking for is, uh, he wants to get some direction on repairs. Satin repairs, roof repairs, staining. Recycling center and slab repairs on the comp after, he's just looking for some direction. I think on any of these items, if he brings an estimate to this select one. We can look at it, weigh it out and see how we are in our building maintenance.
He should prioritize the list, I mean, those, those things that really need to be done soon.
But I think we did have already roof repairs off scheduled in there.
I think, I think so, I thought that.
There were small groups.
Didn't I see one for the transfers?
We've got one, it's in the basket.
Yeah, he proved a tree and did something else there. So he had been approving the ones that he gave us, so.
Right, usually if he'll get, and, and we ask that he try and get three loads.
Yeah.
But if he can't, and he only gets one or two, it is what it is, you know what I mean? But, uh, he should be coming to us with some numbers and saying, I can get this done for this amount of money.
So, yeah, that's an update, um, from the transfer station department and, uh, from the manager of that, so. I think lean on the maintenance items, and have them prioritized like Mike said, and then bring us as early as once as he wants, and we'll look at them as they go.
This thing is, uh, it's always augmenting, we can pick it out of our, uh, maintenance line, we have to, if, if he's busy. He may not have enough money in one of his maintenance line.
Right.
No, I think building maintenance will be our one.
Yes.
Right, I was gonna say, the general, uh, the, the general, uh, buildings would cover that, so they'll recover that anyhow.
Right.
Exactly. I, I can come as well.
Okay, the next email I have here is from the transfer station manager, Woody Bone, again. Uh, looking for some training on, um, uploading stuff onto our new website, so lean, if you could help him with that.
Donna's already responded, uh, responded, I've asked her to train.
I think he's looking for some training for AJ as well, so that'd be great. And lean, any feedback you get on that website, cause we paid a substantial amount of money to make it user friendly, if you give feedback. You know, they can change something to make it more user friendly. I think this is our year to do that, so we know.
Right, right now we have three administrators, the administrators are allowed to talk to tech support. Everyone else can have administrative rights, but there's only, they should funnel their questions for our needs through the local administrators. And so we can create as many users as we need to. And that's where we're at, trying to get ourselves comfortable with it, so that we can sit down and then train the next round of individuals to take input, their own notices, their own agendas, their own, um, minutes, and be, only be allowed to make those changes on that specific page that would comply with them.
Okay. Are they finding it user friendly enough?
I find it's very, very easy to use, Eric has really taken to it very, very quickly, been a big help.
Maybe we'll have Eric do some of the training.
Yeah, Donna's doing well, it's fine, I'm just a little busy to, to take the time. But, uh, it is very easy to use right now on our.
Okay, going on to the next mailbox item, the police department having a bicycle rodeo. Sunday, August twenty-ninth, from two P M. to four P M. at the Dunbaran Elementary School. Uh, this is the fourth annual Dunbaran Police Bicycle Rodeo. So, I think, uh, maybe we could split that up on the marquee after Old Home Day.
I know, right now it's only calendar on our website.
Right, but on the marquee after Old Home Day, I would do that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good idea, have that on the marquee.
When I say marquee, I'm talking about the, uh, the big sign, yeah, okay.
Okay, the police department's also having a medical mental health, um, joint three-time event. That's scheduled for Wednesday, September fifteenth, from three P M. to seven P M. Barnard Park Medical Mental Health Registration Event in Gosstown, New Hampshire. Lean, who is that for just the place for, sir?
Yeah, there's the three police departments, so, uh.
Get together.
Joint effort to, um.
I did read forward, who can go?
I think everyone, it's open to everyone. That is on the website as well.
Yeah, for families and members. Um, the police department also forwarded a right-to-know request. Um, to ask for some financial data. Lean and I went over this today. Um, some of the things we're gonna be able to answer, and some of them are not gonna be able to answer.
Hey, I read that too, and the thing is, uh, that's, that's almost like fishing expedition. I found that the majority of information, just in twenty-twenty, uh, uh, the town report has all that information, I almost feel like just giving a copy in the town report. And it has, uh, grants, salaries, and, and staffing, it has it all in there, and, uh.
And we don't get into the other questions they asked about race and ethnicity and all that other stuff.
Right, and, and age is one of those protected, um, um, birthdays and ages are protected or sensitive items, which would black, uh, line out anyways. And, and the thing is, and then there's another one request for another additional information. I just, I just find that there's a lot of, uh, uh, a lot of busy work for our staff when they have other jobs to do.
I don't have any problem giving them the town report, if we don't have them, we can copy the very few pages they need, the police department page and a couple of others in there.
They, so that particular right-to-know request is from the year two thousand to current, so that's a pretty lengthy period.
Twenty years, yeah.
For me to have to pull back together, so.
So let's just pull it right out of those, keep it simple.
Yeah.
And if they're not happy with that, then they can respond back to us, but, um, I think there's something we can have Joe redo and just provide the pages, I think, out of the reports.
Yeah, yeah, I like that idea.
And they state these are pulled from our town reports, public information.
Yeah.
And full copies are available at the hall if you want to look at.
Yeah, because that is a, a little, it's, it's a, um, it's like the monkey surveys, that type of, um, link. But, um, it's through the Concord Monitor they're requesting it, there's a.
I think they're more looking for, um, more ethnic backgrounds of who's working in different departments in New Hampshire. Probably gonna be in some sort of letter stated from them of, you know, whether they're diverse or not.
Sounds very ethnic.
Right. So. As Mike stated, we have another right-to-know request, uh, that Lean received. Uh, looking for public records. And these right-to-know requests are not simple ones, they're very, um, long. This one's asking us for purchase order dates, which we don't have a purchase order system in here. But they're looking, um, to get our B S M I records for all the purchases made from the town.
Two thousand fifteen to current.
From two thousand fifteen to current, and, um, again, it's an awful lot to try and track and Lean's not only gonna download this, but make sure that there's no personal information on it from the vendors. Um, social security numbers or contact information and addresses, um, tax, tax identification numbers.
Yeah, the recipients will want the complete vendor payment and could be confidential, so it's gonna take a little more time.
So she's requested some additional time to get this from, this taken care of, and, uh, again, these are not individual people, these are data specialists looking to get this information.
So it's like it's an outside entity that's getting the information.
But unfortunately, with these public right-to-know requests, they can ask for it, so.
I know, that's why I say it's too bad that when a right-to-know request is asked for, there should be someone involved in the issue. Rather than somebody outside trying to get information.
Right. Unfortunately, we can't control that, and they did check with our town attorney and reference that, and he said to the best of our ability, we have to try and do that, so.
Right, unless they change the legislation.
Which at some point it may have to happen, because, uh.
Well, cause in small towns here, unindated, our right-to-know request, and some of the information is going to entities outside in the community. So you end up spending a lot of time.
Some of these are going outside the community.
Yeah.
Okay. Looks like we have an update of the porta potties for Old Home Day. An update from John. Pricing, one forty-five each, one handicap for one ninety-five and thirty-five delivery for total five twenty. In twenty nineteen, the event total cost was three forty-five.
It is one of the.
I'm not sure why he's telling that, we, we told him if he goes on, he's not responding to us now.
Yeah, I mean.
So, revisit.
Yeah, we did add more money to their budget, so if they need more money, we tell them to tell us, but, uh, I think this will.
Twenty nineteen, you paid a lot of lunch for hot dog, too.
They did say the hot dogs.
And the old-fashioned prices, right?
I say charge each use, the porta potty.
There are a lot of people on it.
Um, we have a, we also have a letter here, the, uh, Jefferson, um, town clerk is retiring. She's been a town clerk there since nineteen sixty-seven, and they believe makes her the oldest town clerk. Longest-serving municipal town clerk in New Hampshire, fifty-four years. So congratulations to Polly Bronson.
Linda did say that she didn't think she would make that.
I was gonna make a joke, but I'm already feeling myself. Okay, there's a Concord Monitor article here on the quick growth of Dunbar.
Could I get a copy of that, Lean? It said it was an interesting article, why don't I get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't read this article yet either, but, uh, I'll have her make me an article as well and take it with me. But I looked at our stats and I didn't actually think we were growing that much, so it'd be good reading to read this and see how they've deciphered that up.
Did they say increase of what, fifty-seven percent?
Twenty-four percent.
Twenty-four percent, okay.
Um, well, the same ten-year span, they're comparing us to a similar-sized town, Allenstown, but. I guess we're sought-after town. Location, location, location. Yeah. Uh, we've got a Primex letter here. Um, increasing our property and liability coverages for twenty twenty-two. I did read through this. Uh, we paid thirty-one thousand three seventy-nine. Paid on four nine twenty-one. They do not have our new amount yet, so we'll be watching that to see how much does come up.
Hundred percent, you know?
This is more warning. This is more a warning letter. It doesn't say.
It says a lot, but it doesn't say how much, so it'll scare him.
So we'll be watching for when that comes in. You didn't have a chance to finish up this policy, so it's a work in progress, still finishing up the, uh, R and P, the request for pricing for the roof repairs.
So I did get two, the two quotes that you guys asked me to reach out to, both of them exceeded the amount of our, um, bid policy, so that means and I informed them that I'm gonna have to put this out a bit.
Can you make a copy of that for us so we can take it home for some reading, Lean?
Yep.
Just in the package here. Okay.
A question on this roof repair. Not, not these two. Cause I, when I look at the, uh, last week, uh, cause the last week they came in, we got.
Uh, two weeks ago, yeah.
Are you talking about, but they, they.
I was gonna mention that we were gonna have to do something like that, only just they came in above their.
That policy, yeah.
But the one that had to do with the transfer station.
Yep, that one's still in the basket.
Right, which was a lower number.
Forty-five hundred dollars, did they get that one?
Because that changes.
Dawn, we already agreed to have that one done.
No, you read it, cause it came in last Monday or Tuesday. And I'm sorry, I grabbed it.
Yeah, only cause, you know, it ha- it has time constraints before the price goes up again.
I assumed that was locking in, since he put the bid on locking in before it explodes.
He's already reached out and this is the only one he's gotten. I mean, I.
And looking at the, looking at the comparisons, seeing this one, that's, that's a bargain.
Yeah, and like you said, we're not mentioning any numbers on this, cause we're up with that requirement.
Right.
Judy, do you have something for us?
I do, I, I do, I will.
Public, okay. Okay, well, she's getting those copies made up.
I'm not sitting in the lead spot.
Sorry, any more public comments?
Yeah, just, uh, once I mentioned, uh, the, well, obviously the lasagna and the asparagus work, cause I haven't had any sand washing in my road.
Oh, nice. You really haven't?
Nothing.
All right.
I don't watch it. I was like, man, there's nothing coming in there.
A little bit of a tilt work, huh?
Yeah, that's all it did, you know?
Boy, it's unbelievable.
Yeah. Seems like, I think they see when you need another lasagna, what's gonna happen?
You're gonna be rocking your house. Mike's gonna be telling you this.
The price is gonna look.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Leo. Um, bringing it back to the board till Lean gets back here. Um, anything else other than that?
No, I just have that issue with.
Mike? I do, I think is, um, I know we have a little bit of unanticipated revenue, uh, remaining in the COVID funds, which could be used in any department as we see fit. There are two departments I can see that are in need, I think. One department is the police department. I wanna make sure that you realize that Joe Millioto has been picking up more part-time hours and it's gonna exceed their payroll, their projected payroll. I don't wanna wait till the end where they can't project it and plan for it. The other one is in the town offices here, uh, these, these requests we're getting are a pain in the rear end. And the thing is, they can be time consuming and take away from the normal activities of the ongoing dated activities. I like to plus up and, and give, uh, one of our part-time workers enough, uh, give another an extra day. He can afford to work another extra day, and I would take a little bit off my town administrator's, um, plate. And he's still learning, but still just to have another person in there to come in for another eight hours, I think.
Well, how long a period are you talking about, Mike?
For the rest of the year. Right now, we have twenty-six weeks. Lean has already has them, uh, half the time coming in that extra, extra. So let's say there's about thirteen, fourteen extra pay periods of eight hours. And I think we can afford that and just to keep the town officers running smoothly.
So the, the way I have that budget line currently, um, it covers Joe Marie for her twenty-five hours. And then Eric for the twenty-four hours, but I have a little extra money that I've managed to reduce the co-ass advisor fee by three thousand to allow Eric a few extra hours. So those extra hours I have gives him about six or seven hours, so I've asked him to work every other Thursday on an eight-hour shift and may go over on that line, depending on whether someone takes a day off a holiday, but it's really helpful to have him in there because he's really working well with our support staff and, um, very eager to make all the decisions, all the reporting, all the handling of everything that he's learning, but it takes time. If he's only here three days a week, um, every other week is helpful. Um, having him four days a week would be thirty-two hours a week. That in itself would be an additional.
Yeah, I think the estimated amount of money would be less than two thousand dollars moved from that unanticipated revenue line to, uh, supply, to support that office. And the thing is the same with the police department too.
Why don't you, um, instead of making the decision tonight?
Yep.
Why don't we put some numbers to it, um, related to the hours in both departments? Cause I already knew we were gonna need some for the police department, so I wanna make sure we don't short side with that.
Yeah.
So, uh, put some numbers to it so we can look at the weekly months and then the total, uh, what you think is received for the end of the year. And I wanna make sure that we keep some money in there in case, you know, we get some juggling around.
Oh, I definitely wanted, I think is right now we have over forty K left, but I, I don't wanna tap it more with more than that, twenty percent of that for this purpose. But I think those are two departments. I just wanna be, uh, cognizant of that we are, were, were supporting appropriately.
Well, we already talked about giving them a few more hours for, um, for training this year anyway, so.
And that I'm, I'm maxing out. That budget that I have in that line between the co-ass advised contract and the current hour staff, that sixty thousand is gonna be expended. Um, having an, an extra eight hours for every other week would be helpful, but it's gonna require another two, two thousand twenty-five hundred dollars.
And you do the math. And it will keep us still well at the part-time level, which is what we want.
Which would be thirty-two.
Yeah. But yeah, if you do the numbers, then we can make a little bit better decision on that after accurate.
Thank you, Dave.
And write it down, and then we'll get that square away. But no, we were in agreement already that we wanted him to work some additional time this year to get.
You can get him a very proficient. Okay, so you're all set, Mike? I, thank you.
Okay, so what we're referring to is that the West, Westbrook Construction LLC gave us, he was, uh, he was responding to Woody, and he was pleased to give him a price of, uh, forty, forty-one hundred thirty-five dollars and includes labor material and rework discussed. And yes, with Woody, our removal of the existing skylight panels and the entire recycling station and replacement of imperial metal rib roofing. Any additional repairs to roof deck or trim shall be timed and material. All roofing is warranted for, for the manufacturers, period. Looking to see where it says here. So we have some reputation. So all of the generated roofing material. Uh, due to instability of oil prices, petroleum-based products are priced almost daily. As a result, this quote is only good for thirty days. So I mean, I pretty, would appreciate Woody's inquiry, so. This is a result, you got the clear, excuse me, clear acrylic panels. And they're available from there last two, uh, I don't know much about these.
I, um, I put the note on there.
Oh, the yellow one?
And I, I did call, um,
King.
King and told him that those panels are available at, um, A and B Love Rock in Concord.
Yeah.
The reason I called him was because they were gonna take the existing light panels out.
Yeah.
The translucent ones there, they fall apart. The ones that are made like a fiberglass translucent panel, they're not clear. Um, these acrylic panels and replacement panels are clear. They're not much money, and that would keep the light inside of Woody's building.
Right.
Instead of having to use it, so I notified him of that, so I think, um, Lean, why don't we give him a call back and ask him for an updated price? So we can get this approved, tell him we'd like to go with it. But we'd like to have the clear panels so Woody can still have the light in the building.
Okay.
Because otherwise it'll make that quite a bit darker inside there when they're recycling. I think with the lights they have now, they don't even turn on the other light.
So where you guys meet in two weeks, do you want to make the?
If he hasn't, we can make that.
You want in two weeks, or do you want to make a contingent on our price range?
No, cause it's gonna change.
It will change the price?
Yeah, cause he had solid panels in here and the translucent, I'm not translucent about that. I've covered clear panels around a little bit more.
Okay.
Well.
Not in substantial, though.
No, what I'm thinking is, um, you, I wanna give, uh, I'd be willing to give the telemetry of, uh, contract.
I don't have a dollar amount to give her a lot.
No, but we could put a li- limit on it. We could write it down. What would be the limit? You're the item, I'm gonna rely on your expertise here if you can, Walmart.
What's, what's the date of that original quote?
Um, it's June twenty-ninth, but.
So we have time.
We have time.
Yeah.
I think let's just get a new price in two weeks and we'll.
Okay.
Let him know we'd like to do it right away.
Okay.
I think if we just go by a dollar amount, it'd be better, cause I couldn't.
I honestly would be that much, I thought it was much over.
Yeah, that's, that's reasonable.
But that's why I'm bringing it out, so we all put it off.
No, it was good to bring it back up. I thought we took care of this, cause I did call him that same night.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you know, everybody is busy nowadays, so if you want, we'll give this back to Lean, never.
Okay.
He wasn't aware that they were available, so he thanked me and.
He's happy, he, he really did.
Yeah, yeah.
And he hasn't?
Yeah. They stock them, so they really like panels. Okay, um, that being said, I wanna make a motion to go to non-public. Per, Lean, did you open a note for us before we go non-public?
I don't, but did we already go around?
When you went to the other end.
Okay, yep.
Make a motion to go to non-public per RC ninety-one dash A three, Roman numeral two, paragraph C, um, at the request of the tax collector.